Aquí estamos con el tape 2 y ahora el botón de grabación está encendido Y vamos a hacer un giveaway en el stream celebrando más de 600 seguidores, pero primero vamos a estudiar PL, y el lugar está aquí, ya expliqué una vez pero no presioné el botón de grabación, así que lo haremos de nuevo Una jugada hace unos días Daposuita de Juegos por abiertos check hand, run down 3 bets he colgado 4 bet con aceites Daposuita de Juegos, colo de 4 bet, run down call, flop es 10/6 spr, menos de 1 he shove ambos los calls he spike los 2 outers en el turn Pero la pregunta es, ¿debería shove el flop? Y voy a poner la mano en Pocahutes loud y ver Pero usted puede pensar, ¿qué haría usted? Si tomamos 4 bets y tenemos 10/6, no tenemos ninguna copa en nuestras manos spr menos de 1, ¿cómo jugar? ¿Qué haría usted? ¿Shove o cheque fold? ¿O cómo procedería? Y luego la cosa es, Daposuita de Juegos abre 3 bets, 4 bets, ¿debería callar? Si 3 bets y 4 bets tiene aceites, entonces tiene 33% de equity solo Así que es muy equilibrado, hay 4 BB, dinero muerto en el pot el rate va a ser ese 4/1, así que es equilibrado si el dinero va en pre-flop Si puede ver el flop, fold algunos flops probablemente el EV vaya un poco más alto Pero si uno de los jugadores no tiene aceites, entonces su equity podría bajar Así que dos preguntas ¿Deberíamos shove el flop? Y si estamos aquí con King-King-4, ¿deberíamos callar o no? No estoy seguro, no estoy seguro de lo que Silver haría Podemos chequear uno también ¿Cómo haría Silver contra 3 bets, 4 bets? Estoy bastante seguro que Silver calla en realidad Um, vamos a ver Vamos a abrirlo Vamos a chequear primero antes de poner la mano en Pocahutes Sí, 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 sí Y 1, 2, 1, 6 max, pre-flop ¿Cuál es el 6 max? Oh, solo 5 max ¿Eso importa? Bueno, básicamente es lo mismo Tengo 5 max también Pero vamos a hacer aquí, y fue posición medio abierta En realidad, vamos a encontrar el 5 max Y suponiendo que nadie fondee 3 bets Bueno, no importa porque Tengo una simulación donde nadie fondea 3 bets, pero puedo recordar que el game tree si también no fondeó en los 4 bets, lo que haría sería arruinar la simulación un poco Pero aquí tenemos un pot ¿Y quién lo hizo? Oh, sí, y luego Cut-off, pot de nuevo y yo pot, y ahora ¿Qué hacer con King-King-4? Wow Daposuita, 100% fold ¿Alguien se sorprende? No estoy seguro si me sorprende, pero sí, King-King-4, Daposuita es un fold Y por supuesto ahora cuando tiene ese check 98 Wow, Daposuita incluso shoves Wow, mira la EV diferente Si lo shove, el EV es 16,500 blind Pero si calla, el EV es negativo, así que ¿por qué no siempre shove? Eso es raro, si la diferencia de EV es tan grande si es callado o shoved, ¿por qué no siempre shove? Pero es realmente difícil de ver cómo el shove tiene una EV mucho mayor en comparación con los calls Básicamente el que tiene aceites probablemente no fondee muchos flops Así que puede ver, y si completamente pierde el flop, puede fondear si toca el board, lo pone en, aumenta el EV, eso es raro No tengo idea si es porque la simulación no se ejecuta para aceites o blind, pero es lo que es, vamos a poner la mano en Pocahutes y voy a quitar un poco este y Sí, podemos hacerlo con cuatro jugadores, es suficiente porque hay cuatro jugadores involucrados en la mano Y vamos a empezar a abrir la mano Y primero, ahora Cut-off es casi el que abre Sí Así que eleva y luego el botón que está en la mano original es el Cut-off y luego los blind 4 bets People unfolds, él calla él calla y el flop fue 10/6 Bien Y luego la pregunta es, ¿debería shove o no? Y volvamos El total de ambos fue 500 pit lines Así que, yo, yo como necesito un calculador 500 pit lines divididos por 3, todo el mundo es 160 BB Bien 160, boom 160, boom y 159,5, boom Así que ahora va a ser alrededor de 500 BB pot al final Así que sí, es spr 1, casi exactamente Vamos a empezar a darles algunas rangas Cut-off eleva y es casi la posición medio Así que lo daremos, creo que People abre un poco demasiado, como 25% es ok para mí Y luego el botón 3 bets Ah, es jugador agresivo 3 bets en posición, vamos a poner quiero decir, ese jugador podría incluso 10% de 3 bets, pero vamos a hacerlo un poco más sólido, 8% solo Sí, check 98 No estoy seguro, si el flop es 4/4/5 tienes casi 0 equity O el flop es King-King 7 Estás casi dando la puerta de atrás, como 4% de equity al máximo Solo tengo que ver si mi puerta está abierta, perdón Así que, creo que puedes fondear algunos flops, quiero decir, si shoves cada flop o cuando suponemos que shoves cualquier flop y usted llama cualquier flop el resultado es igual que si hubiera shove pre-flop Pero si puede fondear un flop, y el oponente puede fondear cero flops, su equity sube Así que eso significa que si puede fondear dos, dos, dos flops su equity sube en comparación con el shove pre-flop Así que la cosa es que si ambos oponentes lo ponen en cualquier flop de todos modos, el resultado es el mismo en el largo plazo, como con el shove pre-flop Así que él, 3 bets, 8% y luego levanto, y mi mano era ace, ace, juez 7 Oh, las cartas son tan pequeñas Oh, chico Y ahora Su range de call es casi todo excepto que elevaría pocas aces pero él solo flaco porque la gente no fondea quiero decir, la gente no fondea 3 juegos para 4 bets en realidad Así que su range de call es casi todo Es super malo llamar con juegos raros, pero la gente lo hace solo quieren golpear el set y así Así que suponemos que su range de call es super amplio y luego el botón, misma cosa que elevaría pocas aces y casi todas las demás Así que ahora las ruedas están girando y luego viene el flop y primero vamos a ver, nuestro check medial es 31% solo y ahora digamos que lo shove y luego este tipo range de call es ¿Por qué no lo veo? Quiero decir ¿Por qué hace eso? No me permite usar ese maki flying pass 1 pair, 1 plus, quiero decir ¿Hay otros trips? Sí, set, trips, plus seguro y luego habría callado con cualquier flush draw seguro ¿Y hay otros? Que él dejaría de stack off 7, 8, 9 ¿No habría callado con nada más? Definitivamente no trips, full houses, flush draws, inside straight draw y luego él fondearía el resto No estoy seguro si necesito poner el botón de fondeo aquí, pero probablemente debería y luego lo mismo para el botón Ah, él haría Probablemente haya una manera más fácil de copiar la rango flush draw, y luego el 987 Así que lo que hemos definido ahora son las rangas pre-flop y luego el range de call en el flop y ahora con todas las calculaciones podemos volver a nuestra bet y debería mostrar el EV aquí, pero no, ¿por qué? ¿Por qué no muestra? Tenemos el range de call, tenemos el range de fondeo tenemos el range de call tenemos el range de fondeo y luego el dinero entró ¿Por qué no calcula? ¿Qué me está perdiendo, chicos? ¿Por qué no funciona? ¿Qué me está perdiendo? ¿Qué significa eso? Oh, sí, el game tree no, quiero decir, si fondea, ¿qué hará? Ok, este software es raro Vamos a hacer esto Lo podemos, genial Ok, ¿ahora muestra? Sí, lo hace 175, pero ¿importa si llaman o no? No Así que aquí podemos ver que ahora cuando abrimos el game tree hacia todos los resultados posibles luego cuando shove el flop nuestro stack esperado sube a 175, y antes de apostar es 119 Así que según esto, es muy plus EV para shove el flop y no importa si llaman o no porque calcula todos los resultados en el game tree Sí, no, ¿por qué no? ¿Cómo dices? Sí, lo siento, tenemos dos, usted es uno de esos dos Así que tenemos este correr comenzando tan pronto como si tocáramos uno más interesante, así que si están buscando empezar PL y solo aprender los fundamentos básicos si no tienen mucha experiencia en PL, entonces unen Oh, es Andy, el reverse Andy Así que si quieren obtener los básicos, entonces solo unen y quiero decir, incluso tenemos un punto para eso que no funciona ¿Qué? ¿Por qué no funciona? Debería, ¿por qué no? Oh, no está habilitado, perdón ¿Tenemos algún otro order giveaway? Giveaway no está habilitado, perdón P check loud es y ahora debería funcionar Ok, ahora funciona Así que si están interesados, déjenmelo saber pueden encontrar la información en el link Bien, así que shove el flop es correcto según esto porque hay tanto dinero muerto en el pot shove el flop genera un promedio de 55 pit lines de beneficio lo cual es bastante, en realidad No me sorprende que sea tan alto Me pregunto si ¿Todo está bien? Porque pensé que estaba mucho más cerca y eso parece tan alto la única forma la única forma de verificarlo es usar el viejo Pocahutes y luego el instrumento 3-way que debería implementarse aquí y no tengo el instrumento 3-way, no lo voy a descargar y empezar a trabajar con él Solo tengo que confiarlo, pero tengo mi sospecha de que todo está bien Probablemente lo voy a guardar y voy a salvarlo Voy a guardar el archivo que después, voy a chequear más Pero según Pocahutes, si no hay box o algo totalmente equivocado shove el flop es +55 pit lines lo cual es más que lo esperaba, pensé que podría ser profitable porque no van a tener el 10 tan a menudo y si lo ponemos en lugar de cualquier cosa más que el 10 somos los favoritos pero en realidad lo que pasó en la mano fue que ambos tenían un 10 y fue gracioso, shove y ambos se golpearon y yo dije, ¿qué? y luego vi sus manos ahí, y dije, oh, mierda, él tiene el 10, oh, él tiene el 10 y luego ya llegó el person body poker, el board corre muy rápido, y yo dije, ¿qué? hay ace en el board y no se dio cuenta de que estaban tirando en el turn Cuando los ace vinieron, yo dije, ¿tienen outs? ¿Tienen outs? y debía haberse dado cuenta de que no, no tienen outs Así que dos outers para mí, he perdido mucho de 1 y 2 outers Y 10 es una carta justa pero la cosa es que cuando hay dos en el board la probabilidad de que tengan un 10 baja mucho Como aquí está el Cut-off el que en la mano original tiene Juegos por abiertos entonces él tiene trips, flush draw, o inside straight draw 54% de las veces Así que 45% de las veces no lo tendrá y si solo vemos cuántas veces tiene trips o mejores Bien ¿Lo ha quedado? Las ruedas están girando Ahora, ahí está, wow, eso eso lleva mucho tiempo 22.3% de las veces tiene 10 o 6/6 Así que no es tan común, es común en el range, si no hubieran dos 10s en el board este número sería mucho más alto pero cuando hay dos en el board le baja dos del resto de la deuda, lo cual es lo que se trataba así que no es tan probable Así que 22.3% de las veces, y luego el botón probablemente, podría ser un poco más alto 25, alrededor Así que sí, uno de los cinco, uno de los cuatro veces tienen el 10 o 6/6 pero significa que como más de la mitad de las veces no Así que tenemos una alta equity y la cosa es que cuando el spr es uno, si fondean la mitad de las veces ganamos mucho dinero, y el resto de las veces ponen el dinero como underdog, generamos aún más beneficios Así que es por eso que es tan profitable, no tienen trips lo suficientemente a menudo Sí, la gente tiene definitivamente cartas más altas que otras Así que cuanto más alto es el pair, más grandes son las probabilidades de trips, pero incluso entonces no es como si fueran a tener la mitad de las veces el 10 porque tienen tantas otras manos pero eso fue muy profitable y solo tuvo media hora para hacer las calculaciones Um, hagamos el giveaway en alrededor de media hora Así que esto no será demasiado corto, y vamos a jugar con Visions, en Visions hay la nueva función Street, que es genial, pueden practicar pre-flop, como desde debajo del gun te da la mano y el usuario sabe si la abrimos desde debajo del gun o no y luego puede ver el gráfico de rangos, en general, abriendo 18%, y luego a la derecha está la mano real y luego algunas variaciones de suit Así que una manera muy buena de empezar pre-flop y probablemente la única cosa que me está perdiendo es que se puede seleccionar la estructura de ruedas porque lo que me dio problemas cuando practicé fue el blind Creo que esta es la PL500 PL500, rate configuración y la estrategia blind en PL500 es quiero decir, se limpian algunos y se abre algunos, y se fondean algunos pero luego tienes en tu range limpia, tienes manos débiles, medias, fuertes en tu range de abertura tienes manos medias, fuertes es imposible, al menos para mí, encontrar la lógica cuando una mano fuerte es limpia cuando no está abierta porque se sentía tan aleatorio y en Smallstakes, ¿por qué el chat no funciona? por cierto, en el stream Creo que hay algo malo con Streamlabs, porque no puede conectarse a nada Wow, así que no tenemos un chat en el stream o en la grabación si están preguntando por qué la caja de chat está completamente vacía Algo malo con los Streamlabs Raro Así que la estrategia blind, eso era como ace, juez, jacks, 6 ¿Es el call, es una limpia o es un raise? No tengo idea No, es un raise y no puedo encontrar la lógica, en Smallstakes no limpian las blind a menos que haya antis involucrados, así que Yo corto el 10, necesitas obtener una serie de 10 correctas para avanzar, y yo corto el 10 por lockboxing, tenía 10 manos raras que eran fones, y luego la Street de otro modo es super difícil porque no se puede configurar el pl50 rate Así que ese es el problema, me encantaría tener este tipo de software donde usted podría importar sus propias rangas pre-flop si han hecho la simulación para su entorno, sus configuraciones, etc., etc. entonces podrían importar esas, es Mastermind, el pre-flop helper o lo que sea que el instrumento se llame ahora, que tiene la opción pero Visions tiene mucho mejor visualidad pero luego, enfrentándose a un raise posición medio terminada podemos trabajar con el Cut-off y ahora la situación es que o usted dice que su posición medio abre y nosotros estamos en el Cut-off y luego solo tenemos que elegir qué hacer y eso es una fondeo Oh, nos da red porque no estamos actuando en tiempo King-jack-98, ¿es el call o no? Yo haría Juez, jacks, 3 es un fold Oh, siempre es posición medio abierta, ace 975, yo fondearía Este es un fold Y este es un fold, oh, 5433 sería un call, eso es interesante porque puede ver que en la parte inferior media aquí el range de call para la posición abierta es 9% y luego 15% de trip así que el range defensivo es 15% y 5433 no And five, four, three, three i- is not. In my mind, defend, but yeah, only double suited, but still. That's a crappy hand. I mean. You can't get over it, it's a crappy hand. Maybe silver wants to have some small cards in his range, but I mean, five, four, three deuce would be a lot better. Oh, Yaris is asking on the chat, and did I already read the new Chaynandis book? I actually ordered it for, for Kindle edition. It was twenty-seven dollars. And I'm, I'm happy, happy to pay twenty-seven dollars. Even i- if there's nothing new to me in the book. But I'm always interested to see how other people teach, how they approach teaching the basics. And so on, so I, I've read few parts. Uh, I think it's pretty much the same content that they have on mastermind. And, uh, I, I agree a lot. That there's a lot of things. Uh, about how should we approach GTO? Well, yeah, Chaynandis, he approaches. PLO heavily from GTO solver perspective. And. I'm not convinced if that's the best way to approach. Like he is very. Soler heavy strategy and then exploits. Small portion of times and I, I think you could. Become better player and you can make more profits if you exploit a lot more. So. But he explains in the book why even if none of the opponents plays GTO or solver strategy, why you should study it. And use it as, as a standard line. And I, I kind of agree. And he, he uses the word, was it a PLO framework? And I use the word standard strategy, but it's like, how do we play in vacuum? And he has the same approach as I do, that we have the standard strategy, we follow. And then when we get information and we can justify deviating from the standard strategy, then we do. But, I haven't read it too far, but uh, I, I was in mastermind for. Multiple months and I'm familiar with the work. So I think. I think it's probably one of the best PLO books there are, if you want to get a book. I, I also ordered another poker book, it's called Mind Blowing Poker. And it's written by, assumably. Uh, by a poker strategy member who's convinced that. You can exploit GTO players in certain ways. He doesn't admit it. And the author of the book doesn't say his name, because he wants to be anonymous, which is just, in my mind, it's bullshit. The reason is. He doesn't want to know, he doesn't want the world to know that he exploits GTO players. That's just bullshit. I think the reason is because he wasn't warmly welcomed in the poker strategy when he. First time proposed his ideas and his, he has a. He, he has kind of way to express things that makes people think a lot. But the mind blowing poker. Is about putting solver players. Out of their comfort zone. And I think that idea is, is very. Useful and good. But the ways he dis- he's describing on the book, not, I'm not agreeing everything. Uh. I wrote a review on Poker Strategy Forum, so you can go there and check, just search for mind blowing poker. But I think i- it kind of has a point. Especially in modern poker, where you have a lot of players who are just imitating solver strategies without. Understanding the context and the basic principles, the logic behind the strategy. They're just doing what, like what reason does, they do it without thinking why, or. How I, how I'm exploiting opponents. And let's say vision player is very used to certain sizings. Then what if you start to do different sizing? He doesn't know how to react. And if you know, then you can paint an edge. Like there was a, actually yesterday I read it Jonathan Lino's stream and he was just talking about um, high-stake tournament player. Who actually started slim from all positions. And normally. When people have a limp heavy strategy. They often think that, oh, that, that's a bad strategy, that's fish. That's a bad player. Without thinking, but what if that player has done a lot of work? To excel his slimming strategy? If you know that there's a very good player who limps almost his whole range, how do you adjust? It's not easy. Or there was this, uh, just can't remember the name, there was PLO high stakes player who had a VP IP of seventy-eight or something. Also playing limp heavy strategy on high stakes PLO games. And I, I remember, i- it's many years ago, uh, Kai sent me his, uh, stats. From the heart and asked, then what do you think about this kind of strategy? And I said that can be good. But the guy was crushing mid, mid and high stakes. So there's something I don't know, and I, I just assumed that, okay, he is VP IP is seventy-eight, can be winning player. Well, what? Or what actually was the truth, he had a good strategy and he was limp heavy. And people don't know how to react, they start to isolate him with wide ranges, then a lot of limp re-races, limp calls. And the thing is that then post-flop. He had way different ranges than what people are expecting him to have. And people played the normal post-of strategy, assuming he has certain ranges. Or versus passive bad player who has wide ranges, it's easy, because they don't never bluff you. But what if player who has literally everything in his range is very aggressive post-flop? And you just can't, no matter what the board is, you don't know what he has, he can have literally anything. And it becomes really hard to adjust to that strategy. Pretty much you just have to look at your own cards and play really honestly, and that's when he can gain a huge edge. So. The underlying idea in mind blowing poker is pretty good, it's just the way. He thinks GTO can be exploited, I don't agree on all of those. But i- it's a good idea. And definitely, i- it's always in poker. You want to win money and you win money by exploiting opponent in some way or another. And it's like, yeah, silver players thirty hundred BB, make the games deep. Short stacks, probably no one has done short stack solver strategy. It says in high rate environment, short stack means that your possible winnings are smaller. So not sure if you can beat the rate, but. Yeah, uh, I mean, like one idea, let's say you face an opponent. Who min raises you, your C-bet on the flop with super high frequency. How do you adjust? Every time when you see, but like, half of the times, there's a min raise. And the question is, how do you adjust? And. Uh, I'm quite sure that most of you cannot just say that, okay, it's easy, easy, we adjust this way. Like if I was playing opponent. Who just starts to min raise a lot, uh, I'm not sure how to adjust. I mean, do we tone down the C-bet in frequency? That we see but only nuts? Well, that's not. If we only see but for value, then probably that's not a good adjustment. Um, do we start to re-race his C-bets with wide range or do we call with wide range? What is our coin range? If our coin range is weak, not a good spot. So it's not easy to adjust, but if the min raiser has done the work. Uh, he has done solver work. How to balance min raising range, how to react? And he knows that, okay, most common way for opponent to adjust is this, if they start. To see but less, then this is what I'm going to do, and so on, and so on, and so. If the min raiser has worked. The strategy for himself, he contains huge edge, because he's in his comfort zone. And the other players are scratching their head that I don't know what to do. I don't, I have no idea what to do about those min raises. So just an example. I'm not saying that everyone should start to min raise, but I would say that solver player would be very confused. If the other player is only min raising on the flop and doing with high frequency. If a solver doesn't tell you how to react. Or solver does, if you do the sim, but all these visions. Uh, and the sims that are out there for sale, no one tells you how to react to min raises. Or when we go to two hundred BBs deep, PLO changes, pre-flop changes, post-flop changes. So you, you can put people out of their comfort zone and, and. In mind blowing poker, actually, interesting part was that the author. Was predicting that unless poker sites react to solvers and real-time assistance. It, it might do damage to online poker. And that's what I agree, because. Real-time assistant wasn't a problem a few years ago, but. The computing powers have better every day. And for hold'em, you already have real-time assistants. They read the situation on the screen and they give you the solver output. That's, that's a fact. In PLO, i- it's a lot harder. Because it takes so much. Um, memory and computing power to do most of the flops. For flop turn and river. I mean, even vision doesn't have the rivers. Because it's, it's so consuming to do the sims, it's way more complicated. But let's say in one or two years, who knows? Someone does all those thousands and thousands of simulations and combines them in some way, why not? And I, I mean. You can easily have a pre-flop real-time assistance, even on your mobile phone at the moment. E- everything goes forward. So there, there's going to be a day that real-time assistance will be available. Someone. Wants to make money and he sells hold'em, uh, hold'em real-time assistance for hundred dollars where it reads the information from your screen. And there would be thousands of people buying it and it would suck. So the sites have to do something to make the solver sims less effective, like run it once, splash the pots. So far, as far as I know, I am the only one who has splash pot pre-flop simulations done. Haven't seen or heard anyone else to have them. Then TT has cash drops, it's different than splash pot, because splash pot is not. Calculated to the pot pre-flop, so your open is still maximum three and a half BBs. On TT. The cash drop is part of pre-flop, so if the cash drop is five BBs, then you can open to eight and a half BBs. So it's two different things. And some kind of variations, random antis. And who knows? I mean, i- the imagination is the limit, but. As soon as we add variables that the solver doesn't say, then the effect of real-time assistance goes down a lot. And if you can. Make it less effective, it might actually work. But as I am not running a poker side, then. I don't have to worry about that. Alright, let's do for a few more. Jack seven seven deuce, that's an easy fold. King and four three fold. I mean, the coin range is so tight. So most of these are the easy ones. And. The thing is, with the vision strip. It's very easy to practice pre-flop. It's just my advice that if you play small stakes, then skip the small blind, because that strategy is not good for high rate environment. But other positions, it's quite similar whether we play. Higher rate or lower rate? I mean. Even if you use PLO five hundred ranges on PLO ten or twenty-five, it's not going to be a problem. But it's very easy way to practice. Oh, we can't get, can we get to the flop? No. Oh man, you have to do everything. I was, I was trying to get to the flop, but we can't. Let's try to hit the street then. Hmm. That's a call. That's a fold. Three more. Uh, have to be a, what? Are you sure? Because that seems fishy to me. Alright, if, if there's solver experts in the chat, then ace ten then nine. Is a tree bed. Cut off versus middle position. Um. Let's check. Oh, this is five, I mean, let's do the. Small stakes, it's not PLO. Wow. Yeah, we don't have Shadow Mania to tell us. Why that's right, but ace then, I mean, suited to ace or double suited. I, I would somehow. Ace ten then nine. Needs, but. No, ace ten then nine suited to ten nine is hundred percent raise. I mean. Now, th- this is a part where I scratch my head. I mean, I, I could try to say some kind of. Justifications or reasoning, but I have no idea if they're right. Okay, we're blocking the ace. We are un-blocking the kings and queens, which he should fold. But ace then the nine is, is a bad hand, I mean. I- if the opponent doesn't fold, we are screwed. So. I, I mean, there could be a reason. So i- it blocks the aces, but it unblocks, it doesn't have king or queen, and kings and queens. Are big portion or decent portion of opponent's range. And he should fold those to tree bed. So it should have a high fold equity. I mean, if we put it and everyone folds. Then the middle position should fold. Forty percent of his hands. But I'm going to show you. What if opponents never fold to three bets, if we don't have that forty percent fold equity? Then I'm very sure ace ten then nine is not a tree bed. So. Oh, it still is. But suited to ten and nine, it's just the coin still. Suited to ace, it is a tree bed, even if we don't have fold equity. I mean, this is a sim where if we put. And everyone folds. Then the UTC, uh, middle position, you can see he doesn't have the option to fold. So. It's a simulation where we don't really have fold equity pre-flop to three bets, which is the. Hmm, reality in small. Um, reality in small states. So, oh, it's a, it's a phones to four bet. I mean, it has to be, yeah, as the, the four betting range is crossing. But even if we don't have that forty percent fold equity. It's still tree bed or call. And I, I would just, I mean, I would fold this hand without thinking. Wow. I don't know what to say. But I, I'm, I'm not tree betting that hand still. And this is the thing, if I was opening for middle position and kind of would treat at me with ace ten then nine suited to ten nine. I would mark him as maniac or aggressive player, but he's just playing over strategy. A street is gone. Most of the hands are easy ones, then nine eight eight. Oh, it's a call, wow, not sure if it's a call on high rate environment. It, it balances your tree betting range. But I mean, if we, I mean, how it balances it? Cause we, we don't need the tree bed bluff in PLO. We don't have to bluff, like in hold'em, you can have polarized tree bed range, which means that we treat but strong hands. And then the crappiest of the crappiest. But in PLO, as we don't have that fold equity to three bets, especially in micros. We, we don't want to bluff three, but an ace ten then nine seems like a bluff, I mean, if we want to have port tens in the tree betting range, then. I, I think we have better ones, but of, of course. When we treat at pocket tens, we don't have, want to have king or queen in our hand. To increase the fold equity. Yeah, it, it's hundred BB effective stacks, these are hundred BB stacks. The two hundred, uh, solver works in, in small blinds, so these are all hundred BB stacks. It's two hundred small blinds. So it, it's everything here today is hundred BB. That's, that's weird. And we just can't get. Well, ten then deuce deuce is a fold. I, I can't get my street, here you can see on the top right. The street number. Ace seven five five is a call, what? Oops, ace seven five five. I mean, when the rate is a bit higher. It's. Suited to ace and five, okay, it is a call, but if it's suited to ace and seven, it's a fold. And it's very, the EV is fifty seven mini blinds. Or mini half of blinds, thousand of a small blind, so. Uh, I would say single suited, small stakes, this is a fold. It's, it's very close to the threshold, it's in the threshold. PLO five hundred probably becomes more profitable call. So if you play with visions, remember that. Always nine seventy is not a call. Doesn't like the double suited hand. I would treat at that, oh, it's ace and king suited. Ah, I don't get anything right, I'm trying to think like solver for PLO five hundred. But you can see that it like. What? We, we have a raid of God de mazek. Never seen you, but thank you and welcome and, oh boy, you guys just came. For the giveaway, we are just about to start it. Started with poker user, four bet pot spot should be shut or not. I stand corrected, it was even more profitable than I thought and now showed you how vision street works. And. Visions is not a cheap, that's the problem. Uh, I can recommend that if you have access to vision, then doing this trick like half an hour a day would. Make you a proof of monster, then you get to the flops, turns, I mean. If you do this every day. You can improve a lot, the problem is that you need to be a member of running ones and then it costs hundred a month, so it's not. It's not cheap, that's the problem, but if you manage to get access to vision from a promotion or just. I mean, if you spend one hundred and then you use it every day. I'm very sure it's worth the investment. And, and we had a weird spot here, I mean, out of the raiding party. There's a spot where. Let me open normal six max pre-flop sim. And not that, small stakes adjustment. Uh, just different, as middle position opens and on the card of we are with ace ten then nine, ten nine suited. And solver says it's a tree bed. And yeah, you could use the thens as a blockers, it's just in three bet pots, the fold equity post-flop is, is very small. But the thing is that middle position opens and we are here with ace ten. Uh, sorry, ace ten then nine, and that's the weird part, there is the hand. Uh, ace ten then nine suited, let me zoom in a little. This hand, ace ten then nine suited, it's a tree bed. And I, I don't. I don't see why, and we were wondering what could be, is it because it's unblocking kings and queens? To have higher fold equity, alright, then I opened the sim where. The middle position doesn't have option to fold to three bets, so like in micros, he's calling. Or continuing, continuing with hundred percent of his range, so we don't have any fold equity versus kings and queens. But even then, it tree beds ace ten then nine. And I don't get it. I mean. If I see someone tree bed in ace ten then nine suited to ten nine. Uh, I would mark them with some other color than good solver player. I don't know why that is the case. Alright, uh, let's do the giveaway, what we have. On the table for giveaway, because we hit the six hundred followers. And if you cannot type on the chat, I changed it that it's follower only. So the giveaway is only for the followers, probably when you raid it, you can actually type for some time, not sure. But the thing is that you can either win PLO order Christmas mousse. Or you can win PLO order t-shirt, and if you win, you can pick either one. And then just give me your. Shipping, address, name and everything and I can make the order for you, but someone gets either Christmas mousse. Or brand new t-shirt, so you can pick either one. And the way we're going to do the giveaway is we're going to use the mosh pit. Cause that's one hell of a way. So, uh, let me open it up. And we're going to do. We're going to do a trial run. So the way this works is we start the mosh pit and then you have to type command dance. On the chat. And then it puts you in, I think there was. Uh, 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 one minute registration time. So within one minute, you have to put the command dance and your name goes to the list and then. When they start. Propo- those. What? Eighty fifteen screens, forty three percent equity. Wow, you learn new stuff every day. I would assume that it's quite correct, well, basically versus kings and queens. Whereas kings and queens, you have the ace as an overcard. But yeah, it's, it's quite high. Well, two overcards versus pocket pairs is fifty fifty pre-flop. Alright, but the way this works, when the mosh pit starts, then you can use the common bottle. And it throws the bottle from the crowds to the mosh pit and randomly hits someone and the last one standing is the winner. And the first one is going to be. A practice round, so you see how it works, and then the second one will be for the giveaway. And I will join the mosh pit because I won, but if I win, we do a rerun, it's not who's second. Cause it doesn't necessarily show it clearly, it's associated winner, so if I happen to win the second mosh pit. Then we are, we are doing a rerun, just to make clear, but. Let me put my headset on because the music is so awesome. And now you just type dance. Not sure if the music is too loud or not. Damn, my ears, I, I need to tone down my volume, fuck. Give away solver. Yeah, it's just five hundred euros. I have plenty of solvers to give away. And this is the practice round, and we know if the music is too loud or not, but this is the practice. So you see how it works and then the next one is for. The mousse or the shirt. Oh, now it started, now you can throw bottles. Just type bottle and it, it throws a damn beer bottle. Oh, the bottle missed. And Ben Ulu province, alright, that's the practice round. So now this one is for the giveaway. So this one is for real, this is for the mousse or t-shirt, so now you know how it works. Make sure to register in time. And now it starts, one minute left. You can get a mousse or t-shirt and everyone is able to join. Wow. No one, we had like ten. Ten people joining the last one and now for the real one, there's only two. Wow, I, I didn't realize the mousse and t-shirt are so ugly that no one wants them, what's going on? Someone, oh, we don't have late registration here. Oh, but OMFG, you don't have the mousse. Alright. I'm still standing, I'm there, I'm there. Oh, don't drop bottles anymore, I, I already won, we have to do another one. We have to do another one, because. I can't win my own, so there's going to be a new round, you know, I still, I'm going to join because I want my run code. So we do another one. Yeah, house player, house always wins, I've never win on mosh pit before actually, in my life. It's nice to use the run code on here, uh, you can win a mousse or t-shirt. So either this or this one delivered to your home for free. So either Christmas mousse or Christmas t-shirt, winner can pick whichever he wants. So just type explanation mark dance and get the mousse or. The t-shirt, I think the mousse is for good luck. And the size is pretty much same as with this teddy. Who's a solver is a pussy, but the size is around the same, the mousse is a bit higher, but it's around this. Alright, here we go, oh, if I win again, then I'm going to. Drop from the next one, oh, I'm still standing. Oh, I, I spent my. I just spent my run code. Okay, I'm not going to into the third one, because this, this might take the whole day. I'm the supreme mosher. So now, as soon as we get the second one joining. Alright, and now you have one minute. I mean, uh, for past two or three days, I've had a downswing of fifty binds, cut some back. But at, at the worst, it was fifty binds, running thirty binds under EV. So now the tide turned and now I used all my run code on this mosh pit, not on the poker tables. That, that was minus EV decision to join. Damn. Same song, it doesn't change. And there we go. I want to throw a bottle too. Oh man, he didn't even hit anyone. And. One kind of winner, song three two one. You won. And now, I, I just want to close this one, alright, so I let me write it down so I don't forget it. So, uh. Alright, so just send, either whisper me on the Twitch or if you are on the Discord. There's the link actually, chatbot helped me, that link is working, so you can turn the Discord and let me know. What I need is name, address and phone, so I can place the order and then it will ship to you and. If it's a t-shirt, it's probably straight to home, not sure if the teddy fits. If it's a t-shirt, it's probably straight to home. Not sure if the teddy fits your. Fits your postbox. But if it's via postal services, then they will let you know when it's up there somewhere. So just send me your details and I can make the order and they will ship it, probably in tomorrow. Alright, wow. That was a mosh pit. Uh, thanks for joining, no live games today. Let me see, uh, don't have time for that. Sorry, going to play, but not streaming. Um, probably going to stream tomorrow, once again on afternoon, doing some live PLO. And figuring out some regular, regular stream schedule. For. Which days are, are cash games, which games are, uh, which days are for PLO studying? And then maybe some tournaments every now and then, who knows? But congratulations, Zone. Let me know if you want the mousse or t-shirt, um, the details and what you can send and. The next giveaway is a thousand followers. Ugh, thousand followers or earlier, who knows? But have a fun Thursday. I will see you tomorrow. Bye bye.